Okay, here we go. Welcome, everyone. The Warminster Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, July 14th. May we all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and servicewomen serving overseas. First announcement I'd like to make is that we had an executive session today. We discussed personnel, contract negotiations, some land use, I believe, Mr. Solicitor, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I want to welcome everyone back. I hope you had a happy, safe Fourth of July. Everyone has all their digits. And no one got in any trouble with Chief Donnelly. So that's good news. Other than that, that's all I have, and I'll go to Kathy.
I have no announcements this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few. It's good to see all you guys in the room tonight. Glad to see all the Warminster police here in the room tonight. I've always been terrified of you guys, so I'll behave. I have a few rec announcements. Summer camp for kids, must pre-register, art camps with young Rembrandts, August 8th through the 12th, mad science, August 1st through the 5th, and August 8th through the 12th. Skateboard camps at Monroe Skate Spot, August 1st through the 5th. Park board meeting dates will change from the first Tuesday of each odd-numbered month, beginning with the next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. at the rec located in Warminster Community Park. And those meetings are open to the public. Registration is now open for the park recreation community yard sale, which is a really big one at WCP. Please see the website for registration information. We usually get a pretty good turnout for that, so you might want to register early. And I just want to go over a couple of upcoming events for July. The SECIA rally at WCP was the 16th and the 17th. This Sunday, the 17th, the Ben Wilson Activity Center pop-up market at the pavilion at WCP. It was there last year, it was a really nice event, so you might want to come out to that one. I believe that's from, Jess, is that from 8 till noon? 8 till noon on Sunday, correct? I was out to the one they had.
It's 9 to 12:30.
9 to 12:30, thank you, Judy. The one they had, Ben Wilson Center ran one a couple of weeks ago, they had a food truck event along with a car show, terrific event, really well-attended, you know? So there's stuff going on in our parks every weekend that you really need to check out, especially since a new park project's completed. It's nice and easy to park there, the access road's in, you can come in from either side. The project came out really amazing. If you haven't been over there, please do go over, check it out. The 23rd is the park and rec chalk it up at WCP rec. The 23rd also is the Bike USA on the runway. And the 31st is the Lancaster Supercar Cruise on the runway, which is pretty cool, I've been there for that, too. So that's July's events. I have one more announcement, Mr. Chairman, and a couple of our fellow Warminster Rotarians are in the room, and a lifelong Judge Finello, life member of Warminster Rotary, he's in the room as well. Our biggest fundraiser of the year is going on right now. We raffle off two Eagle season tickets excluding playoffs, one preseason home game, nine regular season home games for lower-level end zone. It's $20 a ticket, and we only sell 500 tickets. And it's one of our biggest fundraisers for the Warminster Rotary Club. I believe Dalton George is in the room tonight from Rotary who has tickets, anyone's interested. Get it Weisner up while he's here, he's raffling.
And Don.
Yeah, and Don. $20 a ticket, and it's a great raffle if you win. You win two tickets to every home game. And it really supports the Warminster Rotary Club. I know I've wanted on about the Rotary Club, but it's near and dear to my heart. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, great, thanks, Mark. And I have to agree that the park is, they did a fantastic job there, really nice. Hope everyone gets out and uses the park, that's what it's for.
I bring my grandkids all the time to the park. They're two and five, and they just love it there. And the meadowing, I happen to see a deer laying in there, so it's not just good for our environment, it's also good for our animals, so just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, they do a great job over there.
All right, Judy.
Hello. I just wanted to tell you, he already told you about the Ben Wilson Center event on Sunday. And I want to tell you about the library. The library has fantastic programs this summer for all ages. Just go to the library, go to warminstertownship.org livery, and you will find all kinds of things. I'll give you a couple of examples because it's too long to read to you, but July 21st they have, and August 18th, they have a book-to-movie book club. They have these every third Thursday of each month at 1:00 p.m., and you have to register in line. But the movie-to-book club they're going to do on July 21st is The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas, and on August 18th, Underground Railroad by Colson Whitehead. They're having drawling series, virtual drawling series, they're having a movie discussion series the third Tuesday of each month. July 19th is Mood Indigo, and August 16th is The Farewell. And then there's all kinds of programs for middle-school age, high-school age, things that kids can get involved in. You need to check out their website, and you'll see some wonderful things at the library. Well, you can call them at (215) 672-4362. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Judy. Janice?
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout-out. Our William Tenet Football Panthers are having a Titans, remember the Titans night? I'm looking it up here, sorry. But you can get your tickets if you go to Warminster Pioneer's Football, and you can get your tickets there, but they will be having some of the football players that were actually in the movie and played on the team at William Tenet.
Oh, that's cool.
In the next couple of weeks.
Very nice.
Get your tickets soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Janice. All right, so we do have some presentations tonight, and the first one, I think the room's fairly filled up for this one, and well-done. So we have a promotion of officers to sergeant and corporal, and we'll introduce our Chief Donnelly.
Good evening. I'm Jim Donnelly, I'm the Chief of Police for Warminster Township, and it's with a great honor and pride that we get to present two officers for promotion tonight. First is Ron Zamborski, he's currently a corporal, but he's a veteran of Philadelphia Police Department. Came to us in 2004 as an officer, who was promoted to corporal in 2015. He's one of our detective, defensive tactics instructors, and a de-escalation instructor. He is currently leading A Squad as the acting sergeant, and after tonight will become the permanent sergeant of A Squad. He's here with his wife, Carly. Have to make sure I get her name right, I got it wrong when I promoted him to corporal in 2015, so. He's got numerous thank-you letters from the community and various commendations, as you'll see, that he's wearing right now. So with that, I would ask Judge Finello to come up, and Sergeant Ron Zamborski to come up, be sworn in, and then we'll go on with the second one.
Here you go, Your Honor. You want to use that one? Okay.
We have one here.
There's one up here, Your Honor.
There's one up here ready for you.
All right. It's on.
I'm Dan Finello, I'm the district judge for Warminster Township in Ivy and Borough, and you know, we, a lot of times, the police department, the courts, you know, they have to deal with a lot of issues, okay? So it's always good to do something like this, a happy thing where someone's been promoted and deserves it very much. I've known corporals seem to be sergeants and Zamborski, you know, for many years, become junior, very professional, okay? As Chief Donnelly said, he's a veteran of Philadelphia Police Department, okay? And he's always prepared with his cases, okay? He's very kind of defendants, and you know, he's a real asset to the police department. So it's my pleasure to swear in the name of the court. Okay, step up. All right. Sergeant Zamborski, you ready to take the oath of office? Okay, wait after me. I, Ronald Zamborski.
I, Ronald Zamborski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support, obey, and defend.
That I shall support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I shall faithfully discharge.
And I shall faithfully discharge.
The duties of sergeant.
The duties of sergeant.
In Warminster Township.
In Warminster Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also swear.
I also swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age, national origin.
Sexual orientation, age, national origin.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability. Totally got it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done, sir.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Congratulations, thank you.
All right, our second candidate came to us in 2008, right out of college.
Officer Kevin McLaughlin is going to be, since Ron has promoted to sergeant, that fills a void, and Kevin will take over the void as corporal. He'll be in C Squad. But he was hired in 2008. He is a graduate of LaSalle College, LaSalle University. He holds a master's degree for Southern New Hampshire University. He's an FTO, and he's one of our two drone operators in the township that we have in the police department. He's here with his wife Kate and his four children, as you can hear. He will be up here, who's coming up with you, Kat?
Clara Kate.
Clara Kate's coming up with him, holding the Bible for him, so Kevin McLaughlin.
All right, Officer McLaughlin is, as Chief Donnelly said, he came here right out of college, you know, and learned the Warminster way right from the ground up, and it's like it's really paying off tonight. You know, he has a beautiful young family, and Chief, he's going to need this promotion, you know? But, you know, like I said, but he's another one, he comes in, he's always prepared, too, you know? He has a lot of respect for the court, you know? He'll help, he'll help a defendant out, too, if they're deserving, okay? And he's an asset to, you know, the police department and the Warminster community at large. So, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and Corporal McLaughlin, are you prepared to take the oath of office?
I am.
Okay, you're waiting after me. I, Kevin F. McLaughlin, Jr.
I, Kevin F. McLaughlin, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of corporal.
The duties of corporal.
In Warminster Township, Bucks County.
In Warminster Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I uphold, I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex.
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations to both officers standing in the courts, and it's well-deserved on both accounts. Thanks very much.
Thank you. That concludes our business for today, and hopefully we don't hold yous up too much.
Thank you, Tony. A pleasure.
Jess, thank you. See you.
So, Judge, thanks.
Thanks, Your Honor. Okay, congratulations to both officers. Well-earned, well-deserved. Our next presentation, we'd like to introduce our new park director, Jessica Fox. Come on up, Jess.
Hello.
So, hello. Before you get started, I'd like to say welcome, on behalf of the board, your reputation precedes yourself, we hear about you all over the place, and I'd like to apologize for the township, for some ill-mannered behavior and some rude behavior at your very first meeting. That's not the norm here, that's not who Warminster is, so we just want you to accept our apology for that, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. We're going to move forward in a positive way.
Absolutely.
All right.
Ben, just, Jess is the new park's rec director, she had the same position previously in Bristol Township, and before that in Falls Township. She's got a lot of experience under her belt and is very enthusiastic about the challenge and opportunity here, hopefully for the last job she'll ever have.
One to know, yes. Thank you so much, I'm looking forward to getting started.
Welcome, Jess. Great welcome, thank you. All right, we save the next one, hopefully it's as short as the previous two.
I think that's a hint.
If not shorter, yes. Warminster Municipal Authority for an update on where we are with our stormwater and other things going on with the WMA. Hello, Tim.
Good evening, I'm Tim Hagie, I'm the general manager of the Warminster Municipal Authority, and with me tonight again is Dalton George, he's assistant general manager, and if you've dealt with him, you know it's a very positive and experienced, so we're lucky to have him. So with that, start.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. So we're going to go through tonight just a brief update on stormwater. So just a reminder for the public, the system in total is just shy of 269,000 linear feet of pipe, around 2,100 storm drains, and around 100 outfalls in the township. We have a three-step evaluation process, going to clean and assess. We had a goal this year from September to September to televise 30,000 feet of stormpipe. Happy to announce we hit our goal by the end of June, so we will continue to move forward. Establishing our maintenance program, we're about a year in, we seem to know where the low-lying problem inlets are, but please, as the residents are out there, continue to do your best with the grass clippings, and with the fall coming up, the leaves will be a big issue, so please help us out there. We continue planning for the future capital projects, and then organizing and tracking work orders. We've responded to about 250 work orders since last April taking over the system. So as I mentioned back in January, the way somebody can submit a repair request form is directly on our website. You can fill out the fillable link, you can submit pictures, or please call us and we will respond and take a look. Just a quick review of last year as a whole, the transfer was finalized in April of 2021. We finalized the impervious area calculation, we're around 78 million square feet of impervious surface, and that is less public roads and public sidewalks. Billing system updates, we've always used service address in the past, but with stormwater, we are using tax parcel owners, so that was a little bit of an update that we had to do. Sorry about that. There you go. We developed our rules, regs, and rates. We developed our stormwater fee resolution that was adopted by our board in December, and happy to announce with working with the township, we are officially permitted MS4 system. I believe the last time we had a valid permit was 2017, so that is a big step for us so we can avoid the hefty fines from DEP. We do have our credit program coming soon, set to go to our board on Monday. Majority of the customers will be eligible for up to a 30% maximum credit, and anybody with newer construction for land development that Craig and his staff will review, meeting all the proper criteria and managing up to a 100-year storm can possibly get 40% off. And a key thing on the left-hand side, because when you see shopping centers, you may not know there are stormwater BMPs in place, best management practices, but a lot of them are underground holding tanks and storage facilities. Our 2022 capital work, give everybody an update, we will continue to use the already contracts in place, so for example, the road paving program this year, our water main work that was already scheduled, and we have a few big sewer force main projects. Happy to announce we repaired or replaced 75 storm drains in preparation of the paving program, so we do not have to go back and dig up the road afterwards. We are currently in design phase of the Tennyson Stormwater Basin. That will be a six-and-a-half stormwater basin. A lot of that flow comes from York Road and Christ Home, so that is the last possible chance that we can slow down the water before it goes through Roberts and back in that way in the unnamed tributary. Next up will be the Ben Wilson Center basin. Currently, it is not a stormwater basin, it's just a wide-open field, so that will be also important to create a basin there as well. The engineers are going through and finalizing the full GIS mapping of the system, that's also a requirement of DEP. And the next step after the GIS mapping is the drainage analysis on the entire system that allows to know where our current capacities are and some of the shortfalls with the pipe. And last that I have is the FEMA sites, just want to say thank you to the residents. I know it could be a little eyesore with the orange fence scattered around the township, but this is a long rolling process. We are in our 15th meeting with FEMA since last September, and we just had our inspections in May, so just to kind of give the residents a little timeline, but we have 13 locations in total that are working with FEMA. This is a 100% reimbursable program, since Idaho was pretty hard-hitting within our state and area, and there are over $2 million in repairs for public stormwater infrastructure. Next up, just a few pictures, want to show you working with the township and enforcement of stormwater. This was behind the shopping center of Ashley Furniture. Their basin was clogged with debris, trash cans, and trash. At one point, the spillway overflowed into the shopping center of Kohl's, so we sent them a letter, gave them a reasonable amount of time to fix it, and the next picture is the repairs that they made.
Very good.
Next up, I believe Mark sent this one to me, this is Parmentier. On your left-hand side will be a short video that is a clam rake, standard four- or five-foot clam rake, and you will see on your left-hand side, it completely disappeared. That was a full void underneath that sidewalk. Somebody could have been walking their dog, pet, and completely stepped in that hole and disappeared. That was a good five, six-foot void. So in the middle, you can see we removed the sidewalk blocks, poured some concrete. On your left-hand side, it's a little hard to see, but we did put ballast rock and supported it so it would not keep in again.
Dalton, if you don't mind, that was sent to me by a resident that lives along there, and just for the public certification, if you come across something like that, please let us know, let the MUA know, so we can deal with it immediately before there's a catastrophic injury.
Yes, because as you could see, that was just a small hole.
Oh, yeah, somebody walked in the night.
We cannot see that by the street driving by, so we do really rely on residents to help us out and let us know where deficiencies are.
And as you found, you also can't see in the subsurface, and it was washed out, so it had a potential to collapse. Is that culvert okay?
The culvert is okay.
All right, good.
But again, we just had to pour the concrete so it would not keep in there. Next picture, per our permit, we have 50 feet from either side of the head wall to maintain clear of sediment and debris. On your left-hand side, as you can see, the sediment has just built up over the years, and on your right-hand side is what you will anticipate us getting in and making sure is free and clear of debris. We had a few pipe job replacements already. On your left-hand side, I'd say this is a homemade head wall here. The pipe was completely gone at the bottom, this is right at the edge of the firehouse. On your right-hand side, we've replaced both inlets, 30 feet of pipe, and actually added a proper head wall there for the resident. And last job for us, we had most recently, on your left-hand side, you can see it goes through the ladies driveway, this is 60-foot of pipe replacement. There was no bottom to this pipe, and I believe she said she can hear the struts from the cars from her bedroom, that it used to be a big dip in the road, so again, we completely got in there, replaced it. And as you can tell, stormwater work can be very intrusive, going through yards, driveways, you know, we're seeing now with the FEMA work, some of these pipes were installed 50, 60, 70 years ago, and there are sheds and trees and a lot of things in the way, so we will do our best to work with the residents if we come in and make a repair.
Hold on one second, before you go, Dalton. How many linear feet have you cambered and cleaned this year?
So we have televised 30,000 linear feet.
30,000 linear feet.
And we have jetted 15,000, so the camera really helps us to see, you know, what needs to be cleaned or not.
Absolutely.
So again, we're around 15,000 since last September, and 30,000 feet for the TV.
That's incredible, that's a great job, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment as well. The last picture you showed, I know that resident, because she called me over to show me the work and how wonderful it was, and she was so impressed that you didn't damage any of the flowers beside her flower. I just wanted you to know that it was, your hard work is appreciated.
I also have a comment, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, because you've been in a lot of contact with a lot of the residents, a lot of the work that's being done, and they're all telling me how you have very, very good manner with residents, so they seem to like you a lot, okay? And you do really great work, as Tim mentioned, like the one on Centennial Road, that pipe, that could have been a major problem, Mark, because that was totally crushed.
People like him, he's like Richie Cunningham.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you so much.
Well, that's what they do, that's what our municipal authority does, they run pipe, fix pipe, maintain pipe, and you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks here to our staff, really. They embraced this additional task and have done a remarkable job. I can't be more proud of the work that they've done. Dalton said 30,000 feet of cleaning, we did 30,000 feet of televising, but we didn't do 30,000 feet of cleaning, because what we found was a lot of the pipe that we thought was going to need cleaning, didn't need it. But the areas that needed cleaning was a real problem, but we've taken a lot of truckloads of debris out of the pipe and outfall structure, so it's been working well, and I think the community is well-served by staff. We appreciate those nice comments.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to go over some of the water and sewer admin stuff, go quickly. New billing enhancements, we have, so for residents, we're steering everybody, trying to get everybody to do auto-pay, it saves everybody money and time. Follow us on our Facebook page and our website, we update that regularly. Important things capital-wise, we're, look, we continue to do pipe work. We're not sitting back waiting for the emergency, we're doing proactively replacement of water mains. We're doing right now, we're on Olive Street, we completed Jamison Street last week, I think we got done that one. But we have work coming up in the Speedway, also in Ivy, we have Allen Lane for Jamison, we already did Prospect, Ninth Avenue, and Anne Lane. We already did Prospect, Ninth Avenue and Anne Lane, we're hoping to get to this year. And once we're done then, paving's behind it. One of the residents on Olive said, you know, somebody, there's potholes on the street. Look, we're going to, we're going to pave curb-to-curb when we do water mains. Sewer main, we're going to do an additional water main through the park, that's to help with water quality. That project, that, that project's going to, the, it's going to be approved hopefully Monday night for that project, so later on, we'll have an idea when that's going to start. And if we get Kirk Road Sewer Force Main approved through D-E-P, I think our next step really is to have the township approve the 537 amendment, so we'll be sending that over to township, and as soon as that process can start, we'd appreciate, appreciate that work. Sewer Pump Station Eight, Dalton, you remember the road, it's near Hidden Woods, off county line. Our crew has rehabilitated that force main. We, we're kind of unique in, in municipal authority world, we, we do our own work like that, saves everybody money. Our, our crew knows how to fix it, because they put it in. We're going to go down county line from, from that area, it's Norris Town, come down Norris Town, past the firehouse, and so whatever portion of road there, we don't have to cross the road, so if we can, we'll do a half lane replacement on that, unless that's part of the road program. 10,000 feet of slip lining, it's almost five miles of, of renewing on sewer mains. This is very cost-effective on water mains, till we get done paving the street, it's over $200 a linear foot. With slip lining, we can do, we can do it for about $45 a linear foot. We don't have to dig up the street, inconvenience the residents, and, and all the inconvenience of construction. This is, this is a little video of camera in a sewer pipe. This water in, in that sewer pipe is about 15 to 20 gallons a minute. 15 to 20 gallons a minute is about 25,000 gallons a day. It's taxing on our wastewater plant, that's one joint in a clay.
That's I-N-I?
That's I-N-I. That's one joint in, in our system, and we have joints every three feet. So if, if they're leaking like this, it's a perfect way to rehab that pipe, is to line it, to get that I-N-I out of the system. It's, it's a maintenance item, you've just got to keep at it. We've done a, a number of, of linings throughout the township. This is, this, the colored lines, I'm sorry, it's not great to see, has all, all been slip lined.
By the way, that one joint's nine mil, over nine million gallons of water per year that has to be treated, just from one joint.
One joint.
Rainwater.
Right. Groundwater.
Yep. This slide shows the water mains that, that we've replaced with ductile iron, the blue, the rust color on, on the slide showing where we're at this year, the pipes, the streets that I had previously named. Water quality, again, our communities hit hard. New EPA regulations came out, the regulations are extreme, unheard of. We went from essentially 600 parts per trillion for these two chemicals, down to 70 parts per trillion, the last advisory. The newest regulations that are being promoted go to parts per quadrillion. PFOA, which they worry, seem to worry about the most, is four parts per quadrillion. And PFOS, which is another chemical in the firefighting foam, PFOS is the, one of the largest makeup of firefighting foam, and then PFOA is next, but PFOS, PFOS, is 20 parts per quadrillion. Now, the labs can't measure to this level, but this is what the science has said right now, is safe levels, very extreme levels, but I think what it says to the, to the Authority Board that had the courage in 2016 to go to non-detect, it just reinforces that that was an outstanding decision. Even though it costs us some money, it cost our residents money, we got to, we got to provide quality water to the, to the residents. So as these regulations come out, we're going to adapt as we need to, as, as the labs can detect smaller and smaller amounts, again, we'll do what we need to do to continue to meet or exceed these regulations.
Tim, if I may, one, one of the great things about having a municipal authority here in Warminster, for everyone out there listening and the people here, is the fact that we, we maintain our water quality. Our people that are here maintain the quality of our water. If that was a private, for-profit company, they, all they have to do is follow the regulations, 70 parts per trillion, if it's under 70 parts per trillion, until these new standards are adapted, that's what you get. Where we were proactive, we live here, we drink the water, we made, we, we made sure that we got water with non-detect for these chemicals. So I just want to let everyone know that when they talk about privatization, that you're, the private companies do not have to, that all they have to do is meet the drinking water standards.
Does North Wales water follow these?
Absolutely.
Because that's where we're getting a large percentage of our water from right now.
Correct. It's non-detect.
Right, right.
And our contract with them, Mark, is a non-detect. Non-detect changes, I don't want to get too technical, but as the lab can detect lower and lower levels, when we signed a contract in 2016 with North Wales to supply us water and take our wells offline, we said non-detect, but non-detect back then meant about six or four parts per trillion.
Right.
And then the labs get, kept getting better and better at detecting lower and lower levels. So non-detect now, recently, was about one and a half parts per trillion. So what had happened was, we found, and North Wales found, two parts and four parts per trillion, and then they made changes to their treatment facility so that they could meet that. If you look at our CCR report, that Consumer Confidence Report that we put out last year, it'll show that part of that year was, was a detection of, I think, four parts from North Wales, but they made corrections to that early in the year. But you have to list the highest level that you did for that year, but coming forward, it's non-detect, as, as we know non-detective here at, at this moment. And we can get down to four parts per quadrillion. It's, it's a phenomenal number. I mean, a part per trillion is like a second in 30,000 years.
Well, I have to comment.
Per liter.
I had the opportunity to go over to our water treatment facility and have a personal tour. I had no idea how much was involved in that process, but from where it comes in and all the different stages it goes through, I mean, some areas were a little bit effervescent for a nice, to put it nicely, but it was amazing that, you know, how it goes from here to here to here to here, and how beautiful the water is when it leaves that facility and goes out to the creek. But all the different steps, it was just amazing. The people there are wonderful, I was so impressed with how professional they were, and they answered my sometimes, you know, probably annoying questions, but it was very nice, and it was amazing, and it's well worth what we have, and we just thank you for all your hard work and all your employees.
I have one comment, Mr. Hagie. I just wanted to mention, topping off what Mr. Hayes had mentioned, about if we had a private company that took over our water, not only would we have not have control over the great water that, that, that the WMA is, is producing for us, getting from North Wales, and unheard of, like you said, with, with the numbers as low as they are in this township. But not to mention that these private companies start out with a really good price, and then they jack them up, so you're not getting the quality and you're paying more money. So I'm really glad we made this decision also. Thank you, that's it.
Appreciate that, those comments. We also do stormwater work. We're doing this at, at the Air National Guard, this slide, I think we've had this before, but we treat the stormwater at the Air National Guard base, because we have experience at it, unfortunately, we do, and there's building up and around these tanks right now, and this system did not up and operating for, for a little while. But the effluent from that stormwater basin was sending out 5,500 parts per trillion to the, to the Park Creek, which empties the little Mashamney almost as soon as it gets into Warrington, and quickly comes through Warminster. So for stream health, Aqua takes the water out down below in, in their plant, in Mashamney Plant, and that helps with, with water quality even for their customers. But it's, it's the environment, fish in the stream, people fish in that stream, play in that stream, so we're doing that, that extra work to try and help the environment through, through the communities.
I believe that's kind of, that's one of one in the whole country, or is there another?
There's rumor to have a couple in the country, so we're a pretty rare territory.
Right. Which is fantastic.
Myria Grant, the Military Installation, Mediation, Infrastructure Authority, this is a godsend for this community. We talked about the politicians who put this together previously, it's in our letters that go out to thank our local state reps, state centers, that have provided leadership so that this grant program is in existence, is going to give us our community reimbursement for costs that is added on, no fault to our customers, and it's reimbursed by the state, even though it's a federal, really a federal problem with these federal Department of Defense bases that have polluted the groundwater. We receive grants, there's been a zero water usage charge, it'll be about a year now. We, in the third quarter, we're still going to be zero for water consumption. Fourth quarter is going to be have a slight reduction. So we're going to have a charge fourth quarter, but it'll be a slightly less than the normal rate. We still continue to do private well connections, and if anybody's listening, you've got neighbors with private well, you can't drill a hole in Warminster without finding PFOS contamination, unfortunately. So this program allows connection that is paid for and completed by, by us, reimbursed with the Myria Authority. It's a fantastic way to have a resident that, that's connected with, with a private well get connected to clean to the water.
Do we know how many residents are still on private wells? It's got to be dwindling.
We probably have, Mark, probably we have, probably about 100 in the quarter yet.
Really? I think there weren't many still.
And some don't want, some don't want water bill, so they continue to use contaminated water, but we, we can only ask.
Yeah, all right, sure. I think I would take full advantage of that program.
Most people do.
It would make sense, considering.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Tim, I know I stood on the board, so it's maybe a loaded question, but didn't we just apply for additional Myria grant?
Yes, we apply every year for, for Myria money. I think it's, it's a 20-plus-year program, so we continue to connect homes, get reimbursement for the additional charge for the water for the customers, and hopefully we'll get treatment systems installed on our wells, so we'll have the capability to use them, utilize those wells in the future if we need to. But we don't know what's going to happen at the moment with the Department of Defense maybe needing to, to pay for treatment on our wells with these new, much, much lower levels promoted by the EPA.
Yes, thank you. So just for the edification of our residents, the Department of Defense said they would only put treatment systems on the wells that were over 70 parts per trillion combined for the health advisory level. Well, now that that number's gone way down, and I do believe the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection is going to create MSCs now for PFOS, I think it's 14, and PFO is, what, eight or something like that?
It's 14 for PFO and 18 for KFO.
18 for PFOS, right, okay.
If my, my memory's correct.
So now, that gives us the opportunity, I think because the Department of Defense was a, a big player in, in contaminating our entire drinking water system, well now, the, the drinking water level standards are much lower, therefore, I think we should, that's, that's the long-term plan, by the way. You know, everybody says we don't think long-term, this board thinks extremely long-term. So we know we have some support for 20 years, but we're also going to see what we can do about bringing our system, cleaning up our system. They came up, I mean, you don't use too much GAC anymore, there's some issues with that, but the resin works incredibly well, and it lasts a long time, and you have non-detect coming off your trains and resin. So, I mean, I don't want to get too technical with everyone, but the point I was trying to make was that the Department of Defense basically stuck it to the residents of Warminster by not cleaning up our drinking water system, putting treatment systems on our wells. So now, with the D-E-P lowering the drinking water quality standards, we're, we're going to take a revisit, we want to revisit that. So we'll keep everybody posted.
The, the thing that's missing with the Department of Defense is cleanup of the aquifer.
Right.
They have not done that. They do a, a very small system over at the old NOC base, it's limited gallons per minute, but we clean it up at a well 26. The Authority Board has decided not, not to use that well again, but we clean it up, discharge it to the, to the stream. But again, the treatment system at the Air National Guard Base is also treating, it's essentially treating groundwater at surfaces, so.
Right.
We, we're treating it there also, but that, that's, that's a challenge that the federal government should be taking on right now.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, thanks, Tim. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Anyone, anyone in the audience? All right, thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Dalton.
We'll see you, we'll see you, I guess, next quarter for another update. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Dalton.
Thank you.
Don't forget, anybody want some lottery tickets for La Rotary?
Don't leave without a rotary ticket, right?
Dalton. All right, now we'll move on to land use matters. We have 645 Merns LLC, AKA Secret America, 430 Constance Drive, Lemery, and Final Land Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ed Murphy, I'm here tonight with Jim and Eileen Burke from Secret America, and here to hopefully continue the positive vibe that's been going on for the last hour, but I think everybody knows Jim and Eileen, they know, you know, that they've been here for 45 years, you know that they suffered a fire loss last fall, when they lost one of their warehouse and storage and production buildings. Tonight's application that's in front of you is to replace that building with a new building that hopefully will serve their needs better, and will enable them to get back from rented space in Upper Dublin back to Warminster. So as I know, the board knows, the plan that we submitted has been, the principal focus, candidly, was on stormwater, and the plan has gone through multiple iterations and reviews, and aside from zoning relief, we got back in the spring for certain of those items, the land development plans have been principally all about working with Craig's office to not only handle the new impermeas that this plan contemplates, but also to deal with the fact that historically there has been very little stormwater facilities in the area, including to where the basin that's been an issue for a long time exists. So Craig can speak for himself about it, but I think we're at a point tonight, the plans are in a shape, ready for approval, and I think they've done above and beyond what our techni- what our technical obligation probably would be to do, but I think Craig's pleased with what we've done, and we've gone quite a distance to addressing both existing future conditions as well. Scott, Randy's office had provided me with the draft of the approval resolution, we've reviewed it, the resolution's fine, we're prepared to execute it tonight, assuming the board's ready to move forward, and I would hope it would be, so we can hopefully, as Eileen just said a few minutes ago, occupy a new building back in Warmminster by December of 2023. So that's why we're here, and hopefully everybody agrees that we're in good shape and get the plans approved and keep moving to the next step.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Chairman, I'll jump in. As Ed said, they focused on stormwater management. If you notice, our letter's only four pages long, it's because this is the second review. We also had some engineering meetings and staff meetings, and they understood the issues that Mr. Murphy mentioned downstream. I'd just like to highlight real quick, there's actually this revised plan, stormwater design has four stormwater facilities on its site, it has an underground infiltration basin, an underground basin, a vegetated swell, and infiltration trench, at four different areas on the site. So I'm glad that they, I think Mr. Murphy got involved a little bit after the first submission, worked with our office, we've worked with their engineer, and I think everybody came together on this once they got their variances. Also, Planning Commission recommended 6-0 for Plenary Finals. So I have no other comments, other than I'd like to thank the applicant and their staff for working with us on the stormwater upgrades. I did have one comment about the infiltration rates, they have agreed, they will, the infiltration was not the best on the site, it was below the ordinance requirement, and in the past we've asked the applicant that we can, you can still do infiltration, but you can't count it towards pre and post development runoff, so it doesn't, they don't get credit for it, but whatever does infiltrate, great, we want to recharge the aquifers, but they won't count that in their actual design. So that's a condition of approval, it's not mentioned as part of the waiver, but it's mentioned in our letter incorporated as a condition of approval.
Right.
So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and I'll turn it over to Randy.
Have you heard? Is this on?
Yep.
We've submitted our resolution, we've gone back with a couple minor changes, and we're satisfied, and board action, supervisors' action is in order at this point.
Yeah, and we'll have Jim and Eileen cited tonight before we leave, if you want.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'd just like to say, you know, we're sorry that you had a fire, and you know, that was, had to be a tough, tough one your business.
Eleven.
My questions have been answered about stormwater, and thank you for addressing stormwater, because this is something that's a serious problem in Warmminster, and I can see you've gone out of your way, and you worked with our engineering staff to address the stormwater, because downstream from where you are.
Right.
Especially in twin streams, they flood constantly, and we know we have an issue with the stormwater basin that we will be addressing, but I do appreciate the fact that you addressed the stormwater right there.
I also wanted to say the same thing, as Craig, you had explained what was going on. I appreciate all the hard work you guys did, and thank you for staying in Warmminster, you're great business owners, everybody loves you here, I'm glad you're able to come back, but thank you so much for going above and beyond to get everything in order for our stormwater, because as Mr. Hayes mentioned, it is something very critical to our township and what we're trying to do here. So thank you, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a chance to say hello to the applicants prior to the meeting, introduce myself. I want to jump onto it, Kathy said, "Thank you so much for keeping your business here", and also mentioned that you relocated your employees while the facility was down, which was great that no one lost their jobs, and that's really commendable.
That is commendable, and thank you, and thank you for coming back to Warmminster, we do appreciate that. It's, you're members of the community, and you've proven that, you've proven that by coming back.
We look forward to the grand opening and a tour of the new facility as well.
Yeah. So is there any, would you like to speak?
I'd just like to say that we really appreciate you.
Come on up. Can you make it?
What's that?
You don't have to if you can, if you.
It's too hard for him to do.
I just want to thank the whole community for what they've done for us, the fire, the people coming, if our alarm goes off, they come, they go to empty building, and you guys have helped us big time, we want to be here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the public? No, being none, should we call a question? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Scott, Scott, I'm back in the back.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
My pleasure, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, so consider adoption of ordinance 767, the amendment to the responsible contractor ordinance. Anyone like to speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, the major changes, I'll just go over the major changes, is that it's been, the RCO changes are, the amount, bidding amount is going to be decreased from 350 to 175, and so we don't have this back and forth every year, there'll be a CPI adjustment every year for inflation, so it'll rise from 175, if inflation was 5, 6, whatever percentage it is, it'll go up every year. The next major change is that they need at least 30 hours of OSHA training course requirement, and the third and final is that 70% of the craft labor must be journeymen or apprentices on a job, so that they have to have apprentices and journeymen on the job.
They must have been, they had to have graduated from a training school.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's been a problem in the past, so.
Yes, as we see.
Anyway, that is for consideration for the board tonight.
Pardon me, Miranda, you said 30%, it says 70%.
70%.
70%.
Yeah.
It should be 30-hour training course.
30-hour train, OSHA train.
70% of the people that would be craft labor must be journeymen or apprentices. Yes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No, any questions or comments from the public? All right, being that, none, let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstentions?
Any abstentions? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0.
I just want to say, I think this is really important for the safety of our residents when things are being.
I do too, and not only that, what's happened over the years is we've hired companies that don't have trained people, and we've had to go back a couple times and redo things, so this will eliminate that when we have qualified labor. We saw what happened in the park when we brought in qualified labor and skilled tradesmen, and you know, the fence is a classic example of that, but all the other things that were done, you know, all the site work and all the electrical and all, so we like to do it once and do it right, and that's.
Agreed.
And that's the reason for the RCO. All right, thank you. I think our last adoption of an ordinance is number 768, our OPEB trust, this has been a long time coming, and Steve, please, if you will, we've been, we've been talking about this since I got elected, I know it was a problem before that, and we're finally doing something about it. Thanks, Steve, all yours.
Mr. Chairman, you look so familiar.
He does.
Please identify yourself, speaker.
Who is that?
Yes, this is Steve Wiesner, I serve as a consultant to the township on various items, and tonight on creating an OPEB trust. So on tonight's agenda are four items, one is to establish the trust, the second item is to establish a, or approve, a custody agreement to enter into, to hold the assets of the trust at US Bank, third item would be to appoint PFM as our investment manager for the trust assets, PFM is currently our investment manager for our pension assets, and US Bank is currently our custodial bank for pension assets as well. And then the last item is to approve a transfer of $1.5 million committed from the township's general fund to fund the initial deposit for the newly created trust, which will become effective, I believe, five days after adopted by the board. Correct. So with that, I'll go, just go through the main provisions of the trust.
Mm-hmm.
You need to create, in order to be able to invest this money in the financial markets, you need to create an entity outside of the township, that is the trust, and by creating that trust, then you are able to move this money into that and only use it for the things that the trust is created for, and this will be only to fund post-retirement healthcare benefits, the only thing that they can be used for. The trust is created under GASP 75, so that we can use it to offset the current liability that the township has for paying these benefits long into the future, that liability, I believe, will exceed $20 million this year and far exceeds the liability of the pension plans combined. So this is really a great financial tool to start offsetting that liability. Even though it may sound like a small amount of money at 1.5 million, you're able to use the future returns of that money to offset that liability of $20 million, that's where it becomes really effective. Once you get to a point of about $2 million, that discount rate or the rate of return for future years can exceed, right now we're limited, our actuary will tell us what that number is, and we need to get it to, about $2 million, we really start seeing some great returns. We'll start with 1.5 million, we'll look for advice from our investment managers, and that money will start to grow. So that is the basics of the trust, I could talk for hours, but I don't, if you would like me to, I will be happy to answer any questions on that.
I actually have no questions, Steve, I think it's about time, this has been a, what, an albatross around our neck for long before I got on this board, and there was inaction and inaction, and finally we did something about it, and quite honestly, you know, the 1.5 million, we were able to put together to start this, and our goal, at least, I would say the rest of the board here, is that we want to continue to contribute to that, to get that up to 2 million and more, so we can actually see some real returns and offset the $20 million liability we have now. It's been a long time coming, and I'm really happy to see that we took this step, as a whole, the whole board.
I am too, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I've sat up here for six or seven years and talked about this growing bubble and growing bubble, and I'm just really glad that we have the opportunity here to address it.
Yeah.
It's not a bullet in it, but it's the first step in addressing this.
That's right.
This problem.
Thanks.
It's action. And thank you, Steve, I know you invested a lot of time in this, I know you have.
It was, I thank you for entrusting it to me, it was a fun project, it really was.
Yeah.
We trust you, Steve, what you do for us.
So let's have, before we get into the comments, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Second? Okay. Steve, I know you, as Mark said, and you put a lot of time and energy into this, when you were interim manager here, you and I sat in that office and spoke endlessly and tirelessly on this, and I'm elated to see that the fruits of all that effort and that hard work that you put in has come to fruition.
Thank you, I am too, I really think that this is going to be a big, big benefit to this township, I really do.
And our actuary said that as well. We were reminded every year about OPEB hanging over our head, and you know, this is our first step, and as you said, 1.5 million, it's not a lot of money initially, but it's a start, it's where we had to start somewhere, and to just keep ignoring the problem was going to really be a challenge later in the years, and I'm thrilled that we got it through.
And you know, Steve, Tom told us earlier at a meeting that Mr. OPEB was in the audience already, and we all knew who that was.
We all knew. I want to really sit in.
I can't believe the press isn't here.
I like to be noticed.
Steve has a life, he has a life membership.
That's right.
We're not done with you yet, you know, we're not done with you yet.
No, no.
That's a true compliment, I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I know Don and Beakrim will do a great job, they've done a great job managing our pensions, and we've seen the benefits of that, so Don, you know, continue the good work, and just added another challenge, so when we sit in the quarterly meeting, I'll have something else to ask you about. Excellent, thank you, Steve. Is there any other questions, comments from the board?
Nope.
Do we have to take action on the separate items?
No, you want comments from the public too.
Well, I was, that was.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, any questions or comments from the public?
I'll zone myself out.
No, no, so do I have, we have to take action on the three parts?
Well, you can do it in two, you can do the ordinance first, and then you can do the custody agreement.
Let's do the ordinance first.
Okay, so there was a motion to approve the ordinance.
Yes.
And it was seconded by Janice, and public comment, nothing, we're all done, so let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Don, okay, now what's the next, where am I here?
Custody.
The US Bank in a custody agreement designate the OPEB asset.
Okay, so, so we're going to, is there a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, if you approve the agreement, if you like, I will read it.
Yes, please, please do.
So the first item is the US Bank custody agreement, motion to authorize the township manager to enter into an IRC Section 115 custody agreement with US Bank to hold the assets of the newly created OPEB trust once it's valid after five days.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. And there's one left?
There's two left.
Two left.
How, do you do this one or two?
How do you want to do one or two?
What do you guys prefer? Read them both.
Whatever's good.
Read them both together, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's just time to read them both.
So the first item is to, motion to appoint, or together would be to appoint PFM as the investment manager for OPEB assets, and then the second item is to authorize transfer of 1.5 million into the newly created OPEB trust.
Okay, so motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Second by Judy. Questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, we'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstentions? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, it's a great, a great start.
That's how government's supposed to work.
That's right, exactly.
It's right.
Yeah, it does, it adds up quickly, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Steve, don't forget to buy those tickets on your way up.
I will.
All right, public comment. Anyone? No one? Okay, let's move right to the consent agenda.
Yeah, John's.
John, you don't have anything to say tonight?
What happened? I'll come upstairs.
Oh, no, no, no.
I didn't do that.
I'll blame that on Judy.
Wouldn't be a gig without Johnny.
Well, I'm always the last man standing, obviously, but listen, John Prio was 674 Joseph Avenue, a couple things tonight, it was really good meeting, Steve came up with some great stuff with the water and the sewer stuff, and the progress that he's made seems to be some leaps and bounds, not just moving along. I talked to some of the water guys, and they constantly tell me they're very busy, and they're happy that the outcome is the way it is, so I think that's a positive thing, and I think the retirement program that you guys are putting together is another positive thing, and I think the township is moving along. You know, we always, can't always forget that we always have room for improvement, and that's something that we'll take time and do it, and I always tell Ken, Rome wasn't built overnight, so.
That's right.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
We knew you had something to say.
Right, we like what you said.
All right, so we have, we have another positive thing tonight that we're going to get to in the consent agenda, and I'm really thrilled about this one as well.
I know, that should have been voted on separately.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah, well, you know what, maybe we'll.
Is it the golf carts?
No, we can pull it, we can pull it for discussion, keep it on consent agenda, pull it for.
Yeah, 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 so let's go through the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' Minutes dated June 2, 2022. Consider approval of Response Engineering Monroe and Werner Park Evaluations Proposal, and that is for the electrical and lighting.
Yeah.
That's not working, and the electrical is pretty much reached its life's end.
And we're looking at using ARPA money for that.
Yes, correct. We have consider awarding Shenandoah Woods demolition, it's Bianchi wrecking.
Woo!
All right, all right. And then, of course, we have the consider approval of the 2023 gasoline golf court lease proposal, so we can get around the golf course. 2022, 2023 consortium fuel contract award recommendation, I'll let Tom speak to that. Consider long-stress school redevelopment, Stone Ridge Estates, release number six. Stone Ridge Estates release number six final from escrow account in the amount of $61,810.97. And consider 900 York Road release number two from escrow account in the amount of $38,240. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I would, I just want to comment on the Shenandoah Woods demolition. This has been a long time coming, and originally, the demolition, there was some asbestos abatement that was non-friable. It was just some asbestos in the mastic. I think the original bid was like 2.4 million or 2.3 million for that. Tom and I sat down with Jeff Darwick and his consulting engineer, and we had a conversation about why we needed to remove the park cave flooring from the second floors off the wood subfloor when it's all going to be demolished and sent away as construction debris. They agreed, and then we got this demolition bid down to 1.675, $1,675,000, where originally just the asbestos removal was over $2 million.
Right, it was.
So that's, that's a big thing, and Tom, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak with the RDA because I knew that that wasn't, that needed to be done. Now, the concrete, if it's for beneficial use, yes, you have to remove the mastic, but other than that, you don't. So they agreed. Now we have, that includes the asbestos removal.
Yes.
Yeah, so the asbestos removal and demolition right down to the slabs. So we saved a fortune on that, and we, and from what I understand, we have one of the best demolition companies in the tri-state area that's going to do the work.
Do we have a date definite or close to or a projection when that can be completed?
The RDA is going to approve it tomorrow after we approve it tonight, and I don't know if what.
Then we will get the, they'll authorize the, they'll award the bid, it'll authorize the start, and then we'll get the dates. And as soon as I get them, I'll share them with.
They're aware that we want to get started as soon as possible.
Yeah, before winter because they, people hang out and they're setting fires.
Right, right. No, I'm pretty sure they'll be, I'm pretty sure they'll be gone before Christmas. They'll be all gone.
This has been a long, long time coming. It has been. And I agree with Mr. Hayes that at some point, the federal government needs to reimburse the taxpayers of this township for this.
Yes.
I mean, not just this, the legal fees that we've incurred on this whole thing since the Navy left that property, I'm sure, are well over a million dollars.
Right.
I'm sure. And the taxpayer should not be set with this burden that the Navy left us a slum over there, and they did. They never maintained.
They did.
They walked away, they shut the water off, and we had to bring a tanker in to put a fire on it. I believe we never got reimbursed.
It's embarrassing.
It's an embarrassment.
It is embarrassing, and.
So I know that you've been pestering the congressman.
I've actually, I'm working on that. I have a lot of documentation that we want to provide, and we're working on that, yes.
Good, great.
So I agree. We shouldn't be footing the bill for someone leaving, just abandoning a property.
I know our residents are very excited. They can't wait for this to happen because of what Mark said about, you know, people going in there, you know, setting fires and whatever else they're doing. It's not safe, so I'm really glad we're moving forward with this project.
It's another thing that's a long time coming.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so just one question. Why gasoline? I put him right on the spot on that one. Come on, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, gasoline's been, obviously, what we've been using in the past five years. The cart has been tremendous, very reliable. That's probably the most important reason. The second thing is because we do so many rounds of golf where a lot of times that cart's going out twice, sometimes three times a day, so.
Electric cars not going to make it.
They don't make it, unfortunately, especially when you get to about year four, you're really struggling. And so, you know, the customer service experience that we can give them is just, you know, so much better with the fuel.
Excellent.
Can you turn the governor up on that and make it a little bit quicker?
Yeah, yeah, I know. Get around a little faster. That'd be great.
I'd recommend not, but.
If I could take a minute.
Sure.
I know on the, on the lease proposal we gave, there were two additional items for tow bars and for golf ring covers. I could tell you, with all the events we do, we are one of the few in the area that don't have ring covers on our golf carts, so it'd really be a nice addition, and, you know, one or two events that are impacted by rain, this, you know.
The park and rec event every year. The park and rec event every year.
You know, for the couple thousand a year, you know, one outing is $15,000, $20,000, so pretty easy to make that up and create a much better experience. The other piece is the tow bars. Right now, we don't have tow bars, so there's a labor expense there, you know, that we are constantly fighting to get people, you know, two, three guys in a cart down to the cart building, pulling them up. And again, customer service experience that we can offer by keeping a staff member up on the deck all the time would be much better, so I'd ask that when you do make the motion, the full amount per year would go to $88,227.06 for the five-year, 60-month lease, if we could do that. That would be.
What's, and there's an $8,000 savings in there somewhere, right?
Yeah, and in this proposal that you received, if we approve this today, they'll be able to get the golf carts to us early enough to mitigate the last payment, which is over $8,800, a little over $8,000. So that alone almost covers, almost covers those costs.
Right. Okay. So that's part of the consent?
Part of the consent, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Of course, I discussed the engineering, that we're going to bring an engineer in to look at the lighting or the power needs at Monroe and Werner, and I definitely would love to see that baseball diamond lit up. I used to play in a couple different leagues, and in Florida, in all the major league facilities and stadiums, and Trenton Thunder Stadium, et cetera, and there's nothing like playing a night game of baseball. It's, and I'd love to see that field lit up and utilized. So other than that, any questions or comments? Any from the public? All right, let's call the.
Mr. Chairman, so the motion is to approve the consent agenda as amended, number D amended to add the tow bars and the rain covers.
Okay.
I think that's in there, isn't it?
It's in, it's in there.
Yeah, I thought it was, okay. All right. We ready? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0.
And it covers it for the clubs right on the back of the cart. That's what I thought.
Yeah, I just played in a really, really exclusive country club, and it started to really come down hard, and my bag was soaked. My clubs were soaked, and I'm thinking, what? No rain cover? All right. Financial report. Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, I'll look for a second, to approve the bill list dated June 16, 2022, in the amount of $1,187, 187, $165.69.
Second.
The supplemental bill dated June 23, 2022, in the amount of $841,241.29, so a total of $2,28,406.98.
All right, any questions or comments from the board, from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. All right, financial statement for May. Mr. Rainey.
I promise to be faster than the authority.
Oh, it's him, I don't know.
He's frozen, I think he paid for a while. He's on Janus.
All right, so looking at the financials through the end of May, revenues are still looking very good compared to prior year. They're up 6%. Compared to budget, we're at 62%, where last year, we were at 62%. There should be summaries in your binders. I think there's a yellow sticky, so you can see the numbers that I'm actually looking at.
Thank you.
Some of the big ticket items are still the same. For the revenues, transfer taxes are up $122,000. EIT's up $268,000, which is trending the same. Last month, it was up 12%, it's still up 12%. Since Bobby isn't, she's on vacation this week, I figured I'd give a little heads, information on where she's at. At the end of June, there was $161,000 outstanding of the 8.3 million that gets billed in real estate taxes, so she's doing a phenomenal job of keeping that up to date, too.
Fantastic.
And I know she goes out of her way to call residents, actually knocks on doors sometimes, is gone to businesses, so she definitely goes above and beyond of what is required of her.
She does a fantastic job.
To knock this down. And her goal is always to collect every dollar for us.
Right. Well, $168,000 out of how many million?
Pretty much 8.3.
8.3 million. That's a nice percentage.
Yeah. Moving on to expenses, expenses are up about $243,000, which is a 5% increase. Again, looking at where we are compared to budget, we're only at 33%. Well, through the end of May, it would be 42% is how much has elapsed, so we are trending behind a normal pattern, so we are looking good there.
Okay.
It's a little bit higher than last year, which was, we were at 29% of budget, but still on the expense side, I think we're looking good. We did have some police officers enter drop and get payouts, so I think the rest of the year should be a little bit smoother.
So we're still controlling our spending, and revenues are up, and I expect the EIT with the way the workforce operates now, working at home, I expect that to stay pretty stable, I would think, for a while.
Yeah, and the one thing with the EIT, and I think I mentioned it last month, was part of the reason it's up is because they were able to start collecting on delinquents again.
Okay.
When COVID happened, they were, the state wasn't turning over the information to Keystone to actually match up the returns so that they could go after any kind of delinquents.
Okay.
Two quick departmental updates with the audit. We do have a draft statement already. The one thing, since Steve isn't here anymore, we are waiting on our evaluation. I was told that we would have it by the end of this week, so as soon as we get it, I can pass it off to the auditors. The only other thing is, once they get it, they have to give it back, and then the management discussion analysis, I'll prepare that, and then everything will be done, so I'm hoping for the August meeting to have Julie out here to give a quick presentation.
Excellent.
The only other thing I want to just bring up is, it's July, and we're starting our budget process. So as of today, all the department heads, they have two items. We start with the personnel roster, which includes all benefits, which is wages, medical, pension, taxes, and everything that goes in with hiring an employee. Reason we start with that is 50% of our budget is made up with personnel costs, all of these things. So in, we're pretty much zero budgeting 50% of our budget right from the get-go. And then the other thing they have is they give everyone a five-year history by line item with an average of every line item, so that gives them a starting point of where they should be looking for what budget number. So it's not just, I would take my number, roll it forward next year. It's, okay, what is my average? Compare that to what is actually happening, and see if we could cut, or in some cases, we have to raise the budget.
Right, let's, yeah, it's based on need, not on wishes.
And definitely, the reason we start with expenses is we want to determine what services we want to provide the residents and at what levels. So we're definitely starting at, all right, this is what we want to give people, and then the next phase is the revenue side going, all right, can we match our revenues to what we want to do? And then it's either lower the services or raise the revenues. So it's getting that matching that we need to get so that next year's revenues pay for next year's expenses.
Exactly. Okay. Excellent.
Any questions?
No. Thanks, John. How do you like your new digs?
Oh, it's nice.
Yeah? Good.
Yep.
You deserve it.
Yep, told you I'd be faster than those guys.
Yeah. Thanks, John. All right. No one finished business? We have some new business? No, no new business. Professional reports. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we've already discussed the Shenandoah Woods, but I do just want to add one thing in, in that the, after the RDA gave us the list of the bidders, they were very anxious and cooperative to work with us on making sure that we were, we were not only looking for the competitive bid, but also the responsible contractors, ordinance, and so we do think we've got a good outfit there, and we have, it's a, it's a nice to have a positive vibe about that for the first time in a while, and I think the RDA did a great job, you know, laying out that whole bid process for us. So Ben Wilson Center bid update. We had a false start last time. We had problems getting, working through the Penn bid database, and we, so we took a brief recess from it so that we could get that straightened out and also adopt the RCO amendment tonight, and with the idea that it was going to be amended, we have the, the project manager has put the bid back into Penn bid, and we have copies available for anybody that you know that may want to see it. We'd be happy to share that, but, and I did myself check it. You can go into Penn bid and search under the word Warmminster, and this bid returns in the list.
That's a plus.
So that is, you know, we're breathing down Amazon's neck. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Flagler?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our July engineers report. I just have one update from the report. We actually had a staff meeting or site meeting at Ann's Choice for Neighborhood 4. That's the last phase of that development that they didn't want to build, and I mean, after years and years and years, I think we got the right people involved. Finally, they understand that they have to, you know, address safety concerns out there, address some stormwater and whatnot, so they updated their letter of credit. We're covered. covered. I've been working with Scott and Randy's office on that. So we didn't have to take any action tonight. And they will be working with my staff on cleaning up, getting the punch list done. And what we'll do is a closeout agreement through Randy's and Scott's office where they agree there's no permits, they have no right to that plan anymore. And they, when I develop that any further, they need to come back here through land development process again. We've done that a couple other times. And I think they understand that now. So that was a very productive meeting. On Tuesday was hot. We walked the whole site. And I've been working with their staff on that. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. All right. So we have the Township Managers' announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Assistant Manager Lisa Haddishell will be appearing at the EAC meeting on Monday, the 22nd of August, to take another shot at the presentation on, on the meadows, the benefit of meadows. We tried it to do it at the library. We didn't get much of a response for signups. So we're drafting the EAC into the, into the cause. And that meeting will be here at the Township Building.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Speaking of which.
Can I just ask him a quick question?
Sure.
Okay. Under Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, I think Mark said the next meeting is going to be on a Tuesday. Do you have the exact date for that? Because it says Wednesday, September 7th. Oh, is it Tuesday, September 6th?
I think so.
Yes, Tuesday, 6th. So we'll have to change that on the.
Right.
Schedule.
Yeah, I think we actually have to run the ad in the paper too.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
When's our next township meet?
Well, that's a good question. I was going to bring that up because it's awful close to August 3rd, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Should we?
You want to meet 3rd Thursday in August?
I'm fine with the 3rd Thursday. Yeah.
We have conflict.
You have a conflict?
Well, it's, I mean, it's Bristol. We, I'll cover. All right. And we have, we have active attorneys.
Scotty, Scotty, Scotty cover?
We'll make it work.
What day are you looking at?
We'll make it.
We love you.
We're looking at the 18th of August.
Yeah, but you don't have attorney or deputy yet. It doesn't matter.
They're, they're all good.
I'm Adam.
That'd be fine.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, does that work for you? I, I see your point. I mean, we meet in two weeks. We're not going to have any business.
Two weeks, there's not going to be any business.
We're fine, Mr. Chairman.
You're on vacation? Kathy will be on vacation.
On the 14th.
No, the 3rd. Is that the 3rd?
I mean, the 18th, I'm sorry. Thursday, the 18th? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gone. Because I thought we'd be.
The only other thing would be the 11th. Does anybody have an issue with the 11th? We'd have to advertise it, that's all. Is the board acquiesce until the 2nd Thursday?
That's fine with me.
It shouldn't be a problem.
You okay?
I'll rearrange. Yeah.
I'd like to have, only because I'd like to have the whole board present, one of them.
It, it shouldn't be a problem.
That's fine.
Right. Okay.
So what day are you doing now?
So it'll be the 2nd Thursday, August 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone okay with that? Okay.
Sorry.
All right, you're good?
We're good.
All right. So Tom, we'll have to re-advertise the.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tommy, you have June 27th here for Environmental Advisory Committee? You don't mean June 27th.
No, ma'am.
What, when's, what date is it? It's this Monday, right?
I have it down. It's August 22nd.
Yeah, August 22nd.
That is their next meeting.
Okay, because I know it says June 27th.
Yeah, that's a carryover from the last.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
No, you're not.
No, we're not.
It's a typo.
We want to try that one again, that meeting again.
August 22nd.
And that's going to be when they, when they do the presentation.
Lisa will take another shot at the Meadow program we have. Yes. The next year, that'll be, that, that'll look even nicer next year when we have all the wildflowers incorporated in there.
Can't wait.
Okay. Second round of public comment. All right, being none, we'll move on. I just want to thank everybody. I hope you had a great 4th of July. John, you missed it. You didn't get off fast enough. So I want you to, everyone have a great midsummer, July and early August. And be safe. And we'll see you in a, in a month. Kathy?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you to all of our staff and our professionals, the board, for a phenomenal meeting tonight. We have made some major headway with our responsible contract ordinance, our, our work that we start in Shenandoah Woods, and putting money away for our post-retirement benefits. I think this has been phenomenal. And I want to thank everyone for doing, for a job well done.
Thank you. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, for the second, only the second time in 11 years, I have no comment.
Wow.
Oh, my gosh. I'm shocked.
Not feeling well? Somebody take this down. All right, Judy.
Okay, I just want to say, this was a great meeting. We really accomplished a lot. And it's really nice to see some of the things that we've been talking about and working on for months and months come to fruition. I have one comment to make about the, something that happened in the last two weeks. We had a resident with severe mental issues that's in a group home in Warminster. And she has, her mother lives in Warminster too, who disappeared, walked away, rode the trains. We were looking for her for two weeks. We thought she might have been dead, you know? And the police, the Warminster police were so effective at getting the word out, putting her name on Crime Watch, talking to the Philadelphia Police, because that's where she usually ends up. We thought we found her once and she walked away again. She gets delusional and doesn't know where she's going. We finally have her back safe and sound. Sunburnt, blisters on her face and, and pale and hungry, but she's back. And it was because of all the efforts of the Warminster Police coordinating with the Philadelphia Police and getting her back to safety. And I want people to please remember, mental health issues are real and not something to whisper about and ignore. People need to help each other and talk to each other about these kinds of issues. Have a nice summer.
Janice?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Warminster, the William Tenant Event.